Well, uh, welcome to the meeting. Uh, it's it's January, so it's time to reorganize again. So we're looking for.
There he is.
Looking for looking for a motion for for a chair.
Oh, I make that motion.
I now make, uh, what a care.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion for vice chair, power. Okay, motion, we have a second.
I'll second. With appropriate one.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nick for secretary?
Gary Nick.
Right, so motion, I mean the motion.
Have a nice second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right.
You leave out the woman?
Yeah.
Assistant to the chairman.
You're the education coordinator.
I'm the education coordinator, that's the title.
You're the big vote there.
You're chairman of the store.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're only left to you're only left to be chair or vice chair or secretary or what?
If you want to, you have two different committees, you gotta choose.
I already checked.
Okay, we have a agenda in front of us, any uh, comments or amendments to this agenda? We're not looking for a motion to approve the agenda, maybe?
The agenda?
Second. Motion, second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Uh, minutes from the temper. Motion to approve.
Make a motion to throw the minutes.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, the second, any comments or questions?
No.
All uh, in favor, aye, opposed? Correspondence, nothing? Nancy Middles, Reska Falls Road, sketch.
Uh, so I'm assuming.
There's no one.
You guys have copies of the plan in your packets, I'm assuming?
Hang on Ben, you're not coming through the speakers, you're only coming through my computer.
You're Ben, but I don't see Ben.
Okay, let's try again.
All right, how's this? Is that working?
Uh, that's good.
There you go.
All right, perfect. Uh, looks like you all have plans uh, for this in front of you, is that correct? I could do a screen share if not, but.
Yeah.
All right, um, so the uh, reached out to the applicant's engineer, um, they weren't planning uh, to show up tonight. And it looks like there's nobody there, um, and they said they might follow up later, once they know what their next steps are. Um, and uh, so yeah, so the property is, it's on the east side of Reska Falls Road. It has a second frontage on Chateau Drive, if I'm pronouncing that right, Bob. Um, they're proposing, um, it's essentially uh, seven dwellings total. It's three duplexes, so three two-unit dwellings, uh, and then one single family, um, towards the northern side of the site. Um, these would be across three different lots. Um, and it's in the uh, the R three uh, residential district. Uh, we'd issued a letter back on uh, January seventh, uh, just an initial sketch plan one, so. Uh, you know, possible stuff that didn't get caught or whatever, but trying to catch the big items. Um, and uh, yeah, they are uses that are permitted by right here. Um, and uh, a lot of the uh, setbacks and geometry appears to be um, uh, appropriate. Um, it seems like, you know, just big picture, uh, probably the the bigger challenges that they're gonna have is that with the uh, the duplex use, you know, they're required to have uh, community, whether it's private or public water and uh, sewer. Um, so they've shown some, you know, propose possible septic areas, how they call it out, are possible well locations. Some of those are located on some steep slopes, there's uh, pretty considerable amount of steep slopes on this property, uh, which could present some challenges in that regard, and then um, they're likewise gonna need to have stormwater management on uh, the site as well, which uh, is not currently shown on there where that's gonna be conceptually laid out, but um. Anyway, yeah, for um, initial submission, I don't know if anybody had any questions in any of the comments in the letter, or um, anything worth discussing at this time. Again, I expect that if they wanted to pursue this further at some point, they'll be at the meeting and able to present themselves as well.
So I I did have some questions, I didn't even fully read the letter, but just as I'm looking at it here, I know, so the duplex I know was permitted, but then it looks like they have two duplexes on one lot, is is that permitted? I mean, isn't that essentially like you think that the duplex itself would have to be the one use on that? So that's just like a separated penthouse, right?
Basically.
There's uh, there is a section in the ordinance that talks about this, let me find the specific sections I can.
Okay.
Quickly for you. Um, da, 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 all right, a lot within the R, so this is uh, section one thirty sixty eight two. A lot within the R three district may include more than one permitted principal dwelling unit per lot, provided all of the area and dimensional requirements are met for each dwelling unit. So, um, you know, they're gonna have to demonstrate and prove that, you know, for four dwelling units, that that area is of sufficient size, even when considering the site capacity calculations, um, which uh, they provided some of those, it wasn't completely finished. Um, so that'll have to be more detailed, and then there's some um, easement areas that I think weren't excluded that should be, for instance, for the billboard easement, um, along Resica Falls Road. Uh, so some details will be worked out there, but they are allowed to have more than one on a property, as long as they're essentially able to demonstrate that it it could in theory be, you know, further subdivided, or at least there's sufficient lot area for them.
Well, okay, I guess, so, but they can't uh, so where where does that split up into multifamily then, or is that kind of? I mean, I'm guessing, I'm trying to get my mind around it, like, if they wanted to split these into two duplexes and then create four private ownership paths, you know, like through some sort of condo system or whatever, where people have footprints, are they allowed to do it? Or is it one where you can have multiple dwellings on a property if it's all within one tax ID? I mean, is there any portion there that it? Is there anything there that we have to, I guess, and you know, if they submit something further, we'll find out more, if there's anything there that we have to be uh, more aware of, I guess that.
Right, so I guess, I guess your question is basically, are the options available to them either uh, rental under single ownership? Or like a condominium ownership approach? Is that is that essentially the gist of your question?
Yeah, yeah, and maybe that, or that means we should be kind of. Good plan, huh? Yeah, sketch plan, so we'll.
Yeah, no, I it definitely has to get, th- th- that type of thing will have to get worked out, because I mean, yeah, there's other shared aspects of it, right? There's to some degree a shared parking aspect, right? There's the shared uh, water, shared septic, uh, presumably shared stormwater, right? So i- it's definitely gonna come into play regarding ownership and maintenance responsibilities, um, you know, shared parking, you know? Who does that ultimately fall on, and so that's that's where.
Yeah.
Yeah, I my my thought would be, I I think you're limited to really those two options, it's probably either single ownership where these are rented out, or um.
Well, Ben, it looks like that there is a driveway for each building, there are two driveways for each building, and then there's parking lots.
Uh, there's a separate driveway access for each lot, right? So there's one driveway access for lot one, one driveway access for lot two, and then one for three, yeah.
Uh, and then I guess my my final question, Ben, and this is some of the stickiness of of this is, you know, when we started making billboards, like um, uh, I guess when we started making off-premises billboards, the primary use, or it has to be the primary use of a lot. I know that for most people, if you had a house and you had a billboard before it came through to us, it didn't matter. But when you do a land development plan, then some of that will trigger back on you, right? Like you can't, I I mean, you know, just stuff that we have to keep in mind, because like, at what point are they still, you know, we were originally talking about, we're like, hey, we'll allow for these off-premises ones, and then if someone ever develops a shopping plaza, they'll come with a new land development, and they'll have to decide what's more important to them, right? Whether they wanna keep the billboard, or they wanna put a shopping plaza on, because at that time, we shouldn't be, have our arms back. But up up until then, we do, because their grandfather did, but anytime they try to change something, get more use out of the land, of course, you know, a lot of the, what's existing has to fall back on them. So this might be a question of like, hey, you're you're taking full advantage of this, you're trying to subdivide this lot, you're putting a land development plan, you might try to put this in, will you still be able to keep this billboard? Yeah, you know, I don't.
This this has happened a couple of times actually in the township, so uh, Ben, that's that's a legal thing though, right? I mean, it's.
That's yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a great question, because it's, uh, you know, I'm just pulling up the ordinance right now, so the term I think for it is an off-premise sign.
Yes.
It's a sign, so it says an off-premises sign, maybe a principal or accessory use of a lot, but then the next thing is that it shall only be allowed in the C one district, right? So how how does that get handled in an existing non-conformity situation, right? Where it to some degree, you're you're intensifying the use of the lot, you can make the argument, I guess it's accessory, I don't, or maybe maybe it's not accessory to the principal use, right? If it's. I don't I don't know what's on the billboard currently, right? What's what's uh, what's it advertising for?
Yeah.
And does it does it change, is it like one of the the billboards where it's constantly changing what the advertisement is on it? Bob, is it a fixed message?
This one's a small one, right? This is a number.
Yeah, there were, uh, there there were a number of different advertisements, uh, Great Bear was advertised on there at one time, and so it 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 was used, uh, it's it's up for rent now, but but it's existing, so it that's a that's a good that question to ask. It's gonna happen, because there's a number of them that, you know, were on two oh nine, that were on empty lots, the lots were built on. There's houses on them now, and the billboard's still there.
Well, so. And if they were, and so what I'm saying is, if it's residential and you're you're, it's it's a question of building permit, right? Then that doesn't trigger through us anymore, so we can't necessarily touch the billboard. If it was a house lot, and they had a billboard on it, and you put one house up on your lot, you don't have to, when you build on a bu- a buildable lot, a house lot, come to the planning commission or do a sale, though, sadly.
Right.
But if you had, you know, like, I think our idea is, and if it's if it's not captured in this, our idea is that, hey, when we said that we would have some clarity and leeway in off-premise signs, like, look, they're a feature of what's there. You can't chase them all out, but the idea is that as the township grows and evolves, people have to pick and choose what's more valuable to them, right? Like, if it's more valuable for you to have a grocery store there, then we, you know, there's gotta be something that triggers, goes to a sale, but we look, well, you have to choose, you know, you can't have fourteen billboards in your grocery store, you know what I mean? And I thought we accomplished that in our our ordinance, where remember, we were like, hey, look, we're more open-minded about what the future is bringing in terms of digital signs, you know, whatever else, you just have to be open to it, but then the idea is that.
I understand.
Yeah, the economy should dictate when those billboards go away, but no one ever gets rid of them unless we actually say, if you want this, if you think it's more valuable for this.
I guarantee this case law on this, and Deb would know.
Okay.
You know what I mean, I'm sure it's been challenged.
Well, we have to bring it up, because I, you know, it's, I wanted, we worked so hard on that side ordinance, and I know, I mean, I I was actually, I sat in on some of those three babies, so I had that time, you know, so, but I know we had a vision for how we wanted it. And if we didn't execute it correctly, it may be time to look back at that and say, how do we correctly capture the idea that as the township grows, and people see there's more value in that lot? Is, seems like it's okay to ask them, are you a billboard lot, or are you a grocery store lot?
Okay, now, let's let's busy that with that.
Yeah.
I've I've got a couple of things, Ben, one is um, uh, it's 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 in the zoning book, it's it's one thirty dash oh six oh, and it does say that in R one, R two, and R three districts, um, you you can have uh, more than one principal dwelling unit per lot. Uh, but it goes on to say it's pro- provided there's single-family detached dwellings, and it's not to exceed three dwelling units per lot.
One second.
So, and you still have to hit all the dimensional requirements, whatever. Th- these aren't detached, they're attached, and there's four units, not three, that that are being developed in it, so, just a comment.
Yeah, 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 okay, all right, thanks, yeah.
Um, it the the other thing is uh, the minimum lot size, uh, for lot number three, it it in in R three, single-family home, it's one acre, if for uh, on onsite uh, sewer and water. So that seems under.
They're at what, like point seven?
Yeah, seven eight, yeah.
Okay.
It, the uh, the other thing is, ju- ju- and just to mention this, and it's it's in some of the notes that we have, um, back in the uh, uh, later eighties or early nineties, um, there was actually uh, uh, some dumping that was done on this lot, and it's, it was a a a local uh, business owner that uh, was hauling stumps in, and at the time, stumps were unregulated. So, you know, DEP basically washed their hands of it, until construction debris got dumped on there. And then there was a, there was a group of citizens that got together, hired an attorney, and um, got everything stopped on there, and it was actually, um, it got to the point where it was gonna go to litigation with the township. Uh, so, I I think that uh, the the owner should know that, and and I'm not sure exactly how much construction debris debris was hauled out of there afterwards, as part of the complaint. Um, but they came right in off of four oh two, and you could see that that flat area there with it, with it, uh, the double, uh, the two twins would go, is actually where they dumped, you know, so uh, anyway, ju- it it's just FYI. And they they really should have some soil probes, um, they have septic systems that are in steep slope areas, and there's actually drainage that runs through there, and a culver pipe that crosses crosses the road there, so. Um, just things, the township should be aware of, and and the, and yes. Words of alcohol should know about, so. The end. And so next, uh, so if if there aren't any other comments, would just a motion to accept the sketch plan?
I make a motion to accept the sketch plan.
Second, the motion, the second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Hey, Bob, one more question for you.
Yes.
Appreciate you raising those two points, um. Uh, I'm wondering, is I I I think it's appropriate for me to just follow up on my review letter, and make them aware of those two uh, errors or omissions on it, just so that they're aware, right? To bring it to their attention, so if you if you guys are fine with that, I'll probably just send them a follow-up email and say, hey, this was, you know, noticed by a couple other people taking a look at this, that we're missing our review letter, just so they can plan accordingly.
Right.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, plan review is an unfinished business, personal care home.
This is for Bob.
We have uh.
Let's just still let you know that I'm here to know.
Yeah.
Just keep table on it.
And we're good on time.
Yeah, it doesn't expire till August thirty first.
Okay, so uh, motion to the table, the personal care home?
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion and second, any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, Marshall Square.
Most the table.
Well, let's.
I I I'm mixed up, the the waiver is for the Marshall Square.
Okay.
So it's incorrectly put on the agenda.
So let's be before we move on, let's uh, make a motion to accept the time waiver for personal care, and make that motion, okay? We have a motion, if we have a second?
Yes, I second.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, there is no waiver of time for the personal care, I incorrectly put it on the agenda.
Wrong, okay.
The time waiver is for the Marshall Square.
Okay.
That's after.
So we're just.
Table, action on the plan for the personal care.
Okay.
Okay, a table and action on the plan for uh, personal care.
Okay.
Okay, and then we're making the motion for the other one.
So, second. Yep, okay, we we have a motion to table, the personal care home, we have a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Hmm.
So Marshall Square, we're looking at a waiver of time.
Make a motion to accept a waiver of time on Marshall, Mar- Marshall Square.
And we have a motion, a second, we have a motion, a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Okay.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so now, uh, tabling, motion to table, Marshall Square, chopping seven out.
Yes. A motion.
Motion to table, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're good?
We're good.
All to uh, continue again.
It's sitting on vacation.
Off, off duty.
Off duty.
Any public comment?
I actually think, talked to Ben, I didn't want water with work, but my, it was Mary Martin. My understanding was he had a meeting with Tito of Enterprises on Monday, and um, I didn't know whether they, they put any submissions in since then.
Ben, is that something you wanna comment on now?
Sorry, I couldn't hear, I couldn't quite make out what was said there.
Sorry, Ben, I I came to the meeting, because I'm gonna stop coming, somebody should, um, I don't, don't say that. But I came because my understanding is you had a meeting with my hat on Monday, the Tito of Enterprises, or Tito of Development, and I didn't know whether they were bringing any plans here today, or um.
No, um, I got a call from uh, Wasim uh, Nader, let me see when that was. Um, and there really wasn't much substantive from that conversation, let me see here real quick, uh, da, 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 da. Did he reach out to me? Maybe it wasn't by email, he might have just called me, let me see. It was like a week or two ago, and uh, his question was just about the um, right-of-way acquisition, ki- kinda some of the stuff that you had brought to my attention as well. Um, and I basically reiterated to him the same thing that I said to you, is that, um, you know, uh, Nightshade Court is a privately owned road, um, any proposed right-of-way across privately owned property that's not owned by them, you know, they're gonna need the proper uh, approvals from the affected property owners, uh, the, you know, required sign-offs, and um, you know, that it's gonna be ultimately to the, you know, uh, the township's gonna give the ultimate approval on it, so. He didn't really give me anything concrete, he didn't say anything about plans coming back in, that was really the gist of it, so. Um, I don't have much else of an update for you at this time, have you talked to him since the the last meeting you were at?
Yes. I talked to my house, um, Matt, who's the the lead for the company, um, and uh, real estate agent came to my house to discuss possibilities of making uh, Nightshade Court uh, public, bringing it to township level, and um, then paying me to have access of course my property for a fire road only, to go to the Tito of Development, and we said that we would be amenable to finding out what they wanted to, we did not say we would do it particularly. One of the things they offered us was the land that was gonna be uh, between you and the, you have to have land between the road and you, you have to have a, 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 reesway, was way?
Derive.
Right, and a mea, and a.
An easement.
An easement. They said that they would actually give me the easement as part of my property, to be added to my own deed, when they split it up, and then they asked me to call you on Monday, because they had a phone with you on Monday there. Um, and then yesterday, the text asking me if I told you to tell you that Peter and Mary Barney were amenable to this, but we we can't say we're amenable to anything if the township hasn't even looked at the proposal for a night change to become a township road. Now, many of us know that, and there's a problem with night change, from my understanding, becoming a township road, it's too narrow, and in order to make it walk enough, you would have no access to people on this right-of-way road, because of the the slope to the house. I don't know whether.
Yeah, um.
I was gonna bring a picture to show people, so you can understand it.
Yeah, um, so unfortunately, again, I have not seen any formal plans presented for this beyond the sketch plan that was submitted, and then you got through the rights and no request, so I have not seen anything uh, formal since then, so like, our surveyors here haven't reviewed anything as far as proposed right-of-way documentation that's saying, you know, um, here's the meets and bounds uh, for any defined new right-of-way, nor have we seen plans for upgrading that road to township standards, you know, for potential dedication to the township, so.
Did they even talk to you about that?
No, what was that?
Are they even, they haven't even kind of asked you what it would take, right?
No, no, he he basically just said, well, you know, big picture, is this something that's um, even possible? And I s- I basically said, look, the the big hurdles are gonna be, this is currently privately owned, I have no um, documentation right now in front of me regarding what the terms of that private ownership for the road is, like, who's, who owns it? Who maintains it? Um, you know, so whatever that entity is, you know, an agreement would have to be worked out with them, first off, and then two, you have to look at the conditions of the road, what's required to upgrade it, and then if you're pro- proposing to extend it, you're gonna need to get um, you know, right-of-way agreements in place with any of the affected property owners, so there there's a variety of steps here, a lot of it legal in nature, that needs to have before you could do this, um. But I I guess my recommendation, Mary, would, are you working with a land attorney right now? Do you have anyone advising you through this?
We had invited someone, we we tried to hire someone in the nick, but I'm gonna have to hire someone, obviously. And the answer to your question, because he asked it, the only one that maintains that road realistically is my husband and I, because we're the last house, and we have a cloud, and we have a track, so, so. Um, and who owns it is not legally owned by any entity, there is no homeownership agreement, there is no. This one got dealt into when one of the people on the lot couldn't get their homeownership uh, insurance, because they said you have the, they have to have the road is insured, um, but the law says you don't, yes. They, we learned that the road doesn't technically own, isn't owned by, owned by anyone. And.
I would, uh, I mean, I just, my my recommendation would be, if you're if you're entertaining this, I would strongly recommend trying to have a land attorney, just to represent you.
I I promise you, I will sign nothing without a lawyer standing next to me, because most lawyers will tell you, there's a really good time, but I just wanna make sure that, I I've come here again to make sure you're not getting told lies. I think that's my, and I don't mean to belabor the point and take your time, but I was told they, this, and this is probably the third or fourth time I've been told things that aren't exactly true, and they think I'm gonna tell you that it's okay to do that. I'm like, I can't tell the township that it's okay to make my own public.
Yeah, and I think if you're worried, right, like, I think from our standpoint, from everything we've seen, I mean, like, we before, I mean, I, we would not take their, not just because of them or anyone, we don't take anyone's word for it. There's a a a bunch of things you have to do, people have to have signed agreements and stuff that are submitted as part of these plans, so I don't think like that is uh, like, that's not something that falls through our front, yeah.
There are many roads in town that are too narrow, like, plus can't even make a U-turn, so it's a lot to be considered, and someone says that, it's not gonna just happen because they said we agreed to do it.
Carry the nail on ahead, the road cannot be widened enough to turn a car around without. Mary, the nail on the head, the road cannot be blinded enough to turn a car around without obscuring. Ability to get to two, at least two, maybe three, three of the houses actually on the block. You, it's a winding road, because in the war, the slope could be too much, on either side, it's kinda like that.
But it's, it sounds like, you know, if you hold the cards on this one, that if you say no to an easement. Then they're not coming through your property and they're not gonna connect.
And it's, it's probably that chicken and egg thing, right, where they probably won't move forward with us until they move forward with you, it sounds like.
And if they don't have a signed document, I'm not going in.
I appreciate that, and I would like to stay attentive for this, just to be helpful, also.
Come to this meeting as you want, we like the company.
Yeah, I meant, it's like, it makes us feel important.
Bob will ask for public comments every time, even when there's no one here, but we love it when there's someone here, when he asks for comments from the public.
So I'll take twenty years to show up and be comfortable, but I did, I'm, I'm a writing specialist, so.
Okay, next meeting, that is meeting February twenty.
I was gonna say, real quick too, Mary, uh, I think, do you guys still have my business card from the last meeting? I think I handed to you or your husband, um, I think the last time we spoke, I just, I got a call from you, and I don't have like your number or any contact information saved. So if you wanna send me an email, just in case something comes up that, you know, feel like I just need to contact you, you know, where. They're representing something, you know, if he calls me up and says, hey, they're amenable, moving forward this, like. Um, that, and that way, you know, we establish a contact, where if we need to touch base, it's easier to find your, your contact info, that'd be helpful.
Thank you.
You could give it to Michelle and then you could forward it off, that'd be great, okay?
And make a motion?
We have a motion to adjourn, the second, second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Have a, have a good night.
I actually work on pandemic readiness, since two thousand and ten, Mary.
Have a good night, everyone.
It's a weird thing, because nobody knew what pandemic readiness is when I started doing it in two thousand and eight.